...all state chorus held at the Kentucky Music Educators Association Professional Development Conference. This is a fantastic accomplishment as Emma was selected to be a participant from over 600 recorded auditions submitted from across the state. This event gives students the opportunity to perform with the very best in the state and learn from nationally and internationally renowned choral conductors. The event was in Louisville at the Kentucky Center for the Arts on Wednesday, February the 3rd and Thursday, February the 4th. Great job, Emma. Our next recognitions are some more Baker students, 5th grade students Rivers Gilkerson and Lillian Wallace and 6th grade students Gabe Napier and Phillip Watts. They were being recognized as winning, for winning the Martin Luther King Art Contest. Each student will receive a savings bond and their work, and the work that was displayed is a part of a larger quilt of MLK art that was showcased at the Leeds Theater on Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The quilt is currently on display at the Bluegrass Heritage Museum. So, great job, Bulldog. We also have another Baker intermediate student, Cecilia Chacotti. She's a 5th grade, oh, I'm sorry, and also Hannah Craig, a 6th grade student. They're being recognized tonight for the Clark County Conservation Arts Writing Contest. Cecilia's toaster and Hannah's essay were not only selected as the BIS winners, but they were also won the countywide competition. These students will be recognized at the Clark County Conservation Annual Awards banquet in April. Their teachers, Ms. Lisa Antinu and Ms. Jessica Pettigo, each received $50 for classroom class. Sure they appreciate that. So, a great job Cecilia and Hannah. Again, WBS. Now for Robert D. Campbell. We have several recipients here. This is the team winners at the District Governors Cup competition and they advanced to the regionals. During the tournament play, RDC students played over 20 matches against surrounding schools in Southern Woodland County and Scott County and they finished the season undefeated. During the District Governors Cup tournament, 15 of the RDC students placed in the top five. This advances them to the region. The winners at region will then go to the state. And I think the regional tournament has taken place even since we did this. So, we'd like to recognize some of those winners tonight on the Governors Cup team from Campbell. The first one is in mathematics, Hunter Mitchell. Hunter also won in composition writing also. Zachary Gibson. Mathematics winner. Another mathematics winner, Ben Meyer. Science category is Bryson Stanfield. Colton Powell. TJ Hampton. In the social studies area, John O'Brien. Andrew McCord. In the language arts area, Sidney Luther. Lily also won in the composition writing. Seth Johnson. In the arts and humanities area, Jackson Feedback. Julia also won in the composition writing category also. And then in the area of the composition writing, we also have Hunter Mitchell. And we'd also like to recognize the coaches, Alicia Townsend Smith and Mr. Robbie Sargent. Our next recognition comes from GRC, that's Shelby Gilkerson. Shelby was the 2016 Distinguished Young Woman of Clark County. She represented GRC, our school district and our community with excellence at the State Distinguished Young Women Program in January. Participating with winners from all around Kentucky, Shelby won preliminary awards in talent, self-expression, fitness, and interview and finished third runner-up in the respected program. So, congratulations Shelby. But also, during that same time, she was also in competition with one of the local studios here in Cloggy and they just won the second national championship. Congratulations.
Does anyone sign in for public comment? Item number three is superintendent's report, Mr. Christie.
I've got some district and state, these district and state updates. First off, number one, all certified personnel will be participating in the valid survey starting next Monday, February 22nd, starting at GRC. The survey is completed on principal's performances in the off-year of the TEL survey. Each day, a different school will participate until all certified personnel have an opportunity to complete the survey. Our guidance counselors, library media specialists, and speech pathologists, that's the other professionals in the OPGS, will be participating in the student voice surveys on survey Monday with their students. They will be validating the questions, KDE, providing data for this process. They and their principals will be receiving data and evidence for the OPGS process. All school professional development plans will be developed and approved by the school SBDM councils and returned to the curriculum department here at Central Office by Friday, March 25th. The district team then will determine and will work with them on how we need to support those plans. Principals and assistant principals, content training and math reading and writing will continue this Thursday and that will be led by the district curriculum specialist here at Central Office. Certified Evaluation 50/50 Committee is met to update our requirements for this upcoming year's evaluation, the PGS process. We're waiting for more guidance from KDE to help analyze this document for final approval. One other thing that I wanted to mention, I guess this probably should have been under the awards and the recognitions, but I'll announce it here that Clark County Public Schools through our Food Services Department was chosen as one of four districts across the state to participate in the Kentucky Department of Agriculture Farm-to-School Seed Change Chefs-in-Schools Program. The seed change is an initiative of the National Farm to School Networks aimed at expanding the grassroots farm-to-school activities state to state to support better health outcomes for children and economic opportunities for local farmers. Project is funded by the Walmart Foundation and the school nutrition department. From this grant, being one of the boards selected will receive a chef that will work in the district for a full month and they'll work, they'll focus on teaching the nutritional directors and staff importance of buying fresh and local products, how to incorporate those local foods and products into their menus, teaching night skills and proper handling of fresh local foods.
Night skills are important.
Yeah, to a chef, to a chef, they're important, yeah. Introducing the fresh locally grown products into our schools, to students and to, they work with recipes and menu development to create better participation. And this is a cornerstone for rural development of supporting local growers in our community. So, I wanted to mention that. That's huge, one in the board and state.
All right, next up under student learning and structural services, number four, overview of winter math results. Miss Constanine, how would you like to do this? Principal's person than you or?
Okay.
All right, so first principal is Ms. Hoffman.
We have some new board members that probably haven't been familiar with the math. So, I want to first explain again that the fall math scores are used to measure what the kids, it's a review of what the kids learned the previous year. So, when you see the fall results, those questions and what the kids are asked are things that they should have previously learned the year before. The winter math scores are the first real indicator of what has been taught this school year. Okay? So, and also, I kind of wanted to put this out here. The numbers, there are a lot of discrepancies between numbers on here when you look at percentages, but for example, my school has about 100 kids per grade. So, when you look at these percentage numbers, literally, it's two and three students differences that you're looking at. Those are kids that we have named, we know who they are. So, when we compare the results, you really want to look at last year's winter math scores compared to this year's winter math scores to see how your grade level teachers are performing and where you are compared to where you were last year. Reading, kindergarten, 4th grade, both of those improved from winter of 2014 to the winter of 2015. 1st grade improved their scores from fall of this year to the fall, winter of this year. 3rd grade is where we're seeing the biggest discrepancies, as I would say, in the scores. And if you look at 3rd grade where we are now and look at where they were as 2nd graders last year in the winter, we improved from 38.3% last year in winter to 44.2% this year.
Where are you? I'm missing.
I know that. What's, are we doing reading or are we doing math?
Reading.
Okay. Thank you. You lost me for a minute.
Okay.
I'm back, we're good.
Okay. We go to math and you look at winter math, kindergarten and 4th grade, both improved from last year's winter to this year's winter. 3rd grade improved from their fall scores to their winter scores. And then, if I was going to go over my strategies that we're doing in each one of our content areas.
Yes, I'll stay with the next question.
From December to actually in the middle of February, what we are changing and doing differently. Our reading, we noticed that, and I know the board wanted a report on Lexia. We ran a usage report. The teachers that have students performing better on the reading map, they were meeting their Lexia usage. Lexia is the computer reading program that we purchased at our school. It's a computer-based program and what it says is that it is differentiated for a kid. So, one kid would need to spend 45 minutes a day on Lexia while another child may only need to spend 15 minutes depending on how they're doing. If they need more support services, they need to be on there a longer period of time. So, we were able to use a, run a usage report. The teachers that had high reading scores were meeting the number of minutes that they needed to have their kids on the piece of technology. So, we have increased the Lexia usage and we have, I guess, monitoring it better. We run a report each week and I will contact the teachers and say, I don't know if we had an assembly that was the reason your kids didn't get on this week, but you need to try to find a time that they can get on to Lexia and use it more. Also, we have, the math school, math results are divided into RIT bands. So, this year in December, we divided all the kids of 1st grade to 4th grade.
So, what's a RIT band?
A RIT band is a score, say they get a score of 210. It puts all the kids that are at 200 to 210 in a group together, a RIT band. And then, if you click on that, it says, these are the strategies and these are the skills that they need to master to become proficient. So, it divides them in like skill levels. So, we have now, have 45 minutes in the afternoon that we have all of our Title I Interventionist Support, we've got SPED people in there, everybody we have available so that we can take all of 3rd grade and all of 4th grade and we divide them into groups of about eight kids. One person is working with those eight kids and they're all likability. They need practice on the same skill. January, we worked on literary skills and in February, we're working on informational because it divides the reading up into two different areas. Okay? All of those are doing those for flex groups, 45 minutes in the afternoon.
As part of their classroom instruction.
Correct, yeah. Well, their whole group is an hour and a half and this is above and beyond their regular classroom instruction.
Okay.
And it's above and beyond our RTI process as well. So, they still may be pulled, if they're weak in a certain area, they still may be pulled at a different time, but 45 minutes is devoted for all 3rd grade reading and their groups are very, very small. Okay?
When I look at this data, I'm not sure I understood what you said, the groups I should be looking at.
You want to compare somebody from the 3rd grade winter of 2014 compared to winter 2015.
Okay, but when I look at, so I'm not supposed to look at spring 2015?
Oh, you can.
To fall, okay. So, when I look at spring 2015 for kindergarten?
Okay.
Are those now 1st graders in fall of 2015?
Yes, ma'am.
And I interpret that they fell from 71% proficient down to 62.3.
That was at the end of the year for kindergarten skills.
Okay.
Winter 2015 is assessing them on 1st grade skills that had been taught from August to winter.
Okay, so they were 60, so I look at 62.3 in the fall.
That's still on kindergarten skills as 1st graders. Is that correct, Ringo?
And then 48 to winter.
That's 1st grade skills that have been taught from August until December.
Yes.
Okay. So, we're, okay. The fall would be what they learned in kindergarten?
Yes.
Previous year.
Previous year.
They test within the first, uh, just.
Okay.
And so, they can't test 1st grade content to 1st graders in September. So, they test them on the kindergarten. And then kindergarten, that is live data for them in winter where they should be at this time. But the previous grades, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, the fall math is going to be skewed a little bit because it's last year's content. When you see winter, you're seeing all of 1st grade's content in November because it's going to test them on content that they have not even received yet. Some of them.
Okay, so how is this, I think I ask this every year and I still don't understand it. How is math predictive of K-Prep in the spring?
You want to look at our spring scores, not really winter because we haven't covered the content. The only test in March, it should predict what students have mastered related to how they would score on K-Prep.
Okay, and has it done that in years past? To what degree has it done that?
It's close. It's not, it's not going to be 100%, but it's probably about 8 and 5% accurate. Now, what we would, what we hope is that if they're still scoring lows on math, that when they take K-Prep, they'll outscore their math scores. And they do that a lot because this is all multiple choice and it is an online computer program versus paper pencil, a lot of writing, short answers, which children will sometimes do better. So, this is a different type of assessment than K-Prep. So, we use it as a predictor, but it's mostly in our universal screener. Remember, it's what we have to do three times a year to predict our RTI groups, children that need interventions and that's why we do it beginning of the year because if they are scoring low on that first assessment, they'll be kind.
And what's considered low?
Well, let's see.
It puts a minimum on us, would have been a low score for 2nd grade at the beginning of the year.
Okay. And so then, what about 31.4 for winter for that same group in math? Okay. Thank you.
In reference to the strategies that we're using, we're doing the flex grouping. We strictly, this was our first year of Journeys and we were not supplementing Journeys or Envisions a lot with other outside resources. We felt like we need to be doing more supplementing by pulling things from other places than just going straight by what's in the book. And we feel like that our teachers were not doing a good job of that because they were kind of fearful to stray away from what was right there in front of them. We have a lot of new people too, so I think that we had some people that were, didn't feel comfortable straying away and pulling good resources they felt are good for kids. So, we're working with those. We have interventionists that are working with them that they can go to at any time and say, I need a close reading passage, I need something to help with this to supplement. So, I think that the interventionists are doing a better job with that. We found out that some of our customers, when you look at the numbers up here, and I put it in perspective, you have 100 kids per grade level and if we're looking at 60% of our kids at proficiency, by 3rd grade right now, we have 16, 15 kids that we needed to move to proficiency because we're 44 and we need to be at 60, that's 16 kids that we need to move. We found out that there were several kids on the map that just weren't good test takers. We looked at their unit test, the way they're performing in the classroom, they're scoring regularly at 80, 90% in the classroom on classroom test, but when it came to the map, they just weren't good test takers. So, we have one of those little flex groups, they're kids who performed high in the classroom but didn't do well on math because maybe it's nothing that day. But we have a small group of those kids that are working on basic test taking skills, how to read the question, how to mark out answers that they know are not correct, some just basic test taking things. The iPads, we're going to devote all of those to the 3rd and 4th grade team beginning in April. All Title I resources and interventionists are going to be devoted to the 3rd and 4th grade as well beginning in April. So, all those resources are going to be pulled to the 3rd and 4th grade teams to help them. In math, pretty much we're working on the same things except for, we are using SuccessMaker Math. It's a Pearson product. It is, also K-Prep is made by Pearson. It is a computerized program and we contacted the company and got a pilot, so we got it for free to use from now until the end of the year. So, our kids are going to start using SuccessMaker Math. We've had some technology difficulties there getting it downloaded on apps that they can use, but I think we're ready to go after these snow days. We've got that worked out. So, we're going to start monitoring that as well and get those kids on that. We're also using Khan Academy quite a bit more in the classroom. It's a, it's been out there for a long time, but it's, that math has resources for where you can do, you can click on it and it shows a teacher explaining it to kids in a different way on the board. It's another visual that they can use in the classroom and it's linked to math. And DreamBox is something else that we use for our Tier 3 interventions for math and it's a research-based program.
All of these are math, Ron.
Those SuccessMaker, DreamBox and the Khan Academy are all math.
About writing, tell me about Lucy Cawkins and what we're doing in the writing area.
Well, Sherri, you want to?
We're meeting in our grade level teams and we are, they're writing the units along with Journeys. We've been writing.
Debbie's come in and joined in PLCs to meet with teachers to make sure they understand the unit of Lucy Cawkins. I think this unit that they're in right now has been particularly big because it's essay writing and opinion writing and kind of pushing the on-demand a little bit. So, we are trying to push through that. Lucy Cawkins is not easy. I think it's, it works, but it's, it's something that you kind of need to build on starting at younger levels as, it's a process kind of that kids need to learn to go through. But we are trying to work through it and Debbie has been such help in helping teachers understand what they need to do, cut to the meat of it because Lucy Cawkins has a whole lot of stuff in those books.
So, which grade levels are you working with then?
Well, 4th grade primarily, but she's, she's also coming in. Snow days have messed that up, but we're, we're doing 3rd grade too, just, just to kind of make sure they're on track with Journeys and the writing and pulling it all together.
So are you?
She's meeting in 3rd or 4th grade tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay. So, you're using both the Journeys program and the Lucy Cawkins program?
Yes, I would say some of the Journeys.
Okay, so did those dovetail well?
Well, it's, it's just hard to work through. The problem is that we have, we have kids in my school, I have kids that who do fine with Lucy Cawkins and they can write opinion pieces. I've got other kids that don't know to capitalize the beginning of sentences and the difference between the noun and the verb. So, we have such a wide gap of kids, you really have to differentiate the writing instruction. The Journeys is more, it's like cookie cutter, beginning, middle, end, and where Lucy wants them to write great big essays. So, the teachers are having to figure out almost how that I can differentiate the writing instruction in the classroom so I can still meet the needs of the kids and they have language mechanics instructions while I can still work with the other kids that need to be moving forward with Lucy Cawkins. There's such an ability difference that they, these kids, they're right here, it's so difficult to try to work with them and Lucy because they can't write a sentence, they don't know to capitalize. So, they need to work on skills before they get to this point here.
So, is that, is, is the Journeys program intervention, is that where you're doing interventions, is that within the Journeys framework or within the Lucy Cawkins framework?
From what I hear, and this came from grade level, our meetings too, that we've been having monthly and we've had discussions about this. A lot of teachers feel with some kids that are struggling writers, Journeys is a little bit easier way to approach into, as I said, it's more cookie cutter, I don't know, but you know, it guides them a little bit more and, and so we're trying to, to meet those kids' needs and yet also do the Lucy Cawkins and get them into a more in-depth type of writing. It's, it's, it's not easy and that's why we've called Debbie in to kind of help us so that we can maybe do a better job with that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Next is Susan Hillman, Justice Elementary.
Okay, taking a look at Justice, like one thing that Ellen was saying, you can strictly look at what you see here, but you have to remember to take into account that fall scores were testing the previous skills of the, the grade level prior to that. But there's also a lot that you don't see on there that really tells more about where our kids are. So, several celebrations is, as Miss Constanine was explaining a minute ago, it's when you were asking about this being a predictor for spring 3rd and 4th grade. If you look at spring 2015 for grades 3 and 4 for reading and math, so out of those four, 3 out of 4 of those, Justice is already ahead of where we were last spring. So, I figure we're, we're, you know, if we can maintain that, we're not in too bad a shape because we came out as a proficient school based on K-Prep and using this as our predictor last year. So, that was our first and foremost, our biggest celebration. Again, when you were talking about looking, comparing last winter to this winter, we are higher, our kindergarten and reading came in higher. We had gains. are higher, our kindergarten in reading came in higher, we had gains in our first grade reading and in our fourth grade reading as well. Then when you look down at math, our second came up from last winter to this winter, and then our fourth grade, if you'll take a look at winter there, they went from thirty percent proficient to sixty-three point seven, which I think is quite notable. Then as you, as Ms. Condon was explaining earlier, if you can compare last year's first graders at this time to, who are now second graders this year, if you look at it that way, in reading going from second to third. In second grade traditionally, I can't explain why, has always been a grade that children struggle on that test. I think the biggest reason is, is it's the first year that they take that test reading on their own, it has no longer repped them, and that's a pretty big transition. But we did see last year's second graders, who are now third graders, in reading went from forty-four, you know, percent proficient to fifty-one percent. So that leaves me knowing even when they're, you know, we're coming out of second, we're not where we need to be, but we're getting, we're doing better when you get to third grade, or we're not there yet, but we're definitely seeing gains. Then in math, again, from second to third, we went from thirty-six percent proficient second grade in winter, and that same group of kids as third graders now are at fifty point four. And then our third graders going into fourth, fifty-six point two up to sixty-three point seven. So I think that for our third and fourth, I think we're seeing some good growth, and like I said, we're better now than where we were in spring of two thousand and fifteen. What you can't see on here is the fact that I have, I usually do it at the end of the year, I have my teachers, each teacher has to write down each student's beginning of the year of reading and math score and end of the year score, and whether they grew or they lost. And so this year, I thought, I'm going to back it up, and we're just going to check kind of our average growth now from fall to spring. And so there has been some change in the scoring this year. Usually, it used to be about ten points, equal about a year's growth, and our first graders are expected to make about eighteen points growth, which is almost two years' worth in one year. So in reading, most of my, let's see, first, second, and third grade are all over seven points average growth per kid. And then in fourth grade, we have five, but you don't have, you don't, the goal is not to gain as much in fourth grade as you do in first grade. In math, my second and third grade showed the highest growth at over seven points per child. Now, you have to remember, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when I have kids that, we have more kids making double-digit gains than not. And you also have to take into account that these scores do not show children with accommodations. So this is every child, whether they need accommodations or not, they take this on their own. So I think that's something that kind of has to be factored in there as well. One other thing that you cannot see, just by looking at math scores, is the fact that each time we take math, we sit down with our grade levels and our interventionists, and we reconfigure our RTI groups, that's the sole purpose. I was so excited because we dismissed, it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's better than what we did last year, second grade, we had two children that exited Tier Three reading. I had two in third with three more, hopefully will be coming out in March after the next round. Seven kids in fourth grade came out of Tier Three reading this time, from fall to winter. And I attribute that to, I have an unbelievable group of interventionists this year, and we've taken a whole different approach to our interventions this year. And I looked at some districts that surrounded Clark County, and what were they doing to make them proficient schools, proficient districts? And one thing that stood out is they really took their reading, their reading and their math scores down to the smallest size possible. And so this year, for Mr. Kennedy, I drove him half nuts, I said, "This is what I want, and you're going to make it happen. I'm scheduling, I'm not a scheduler, so I'll leave that to him." But what we've done is we built in RTI timing to every grade level stay. So I had a team of four retired teachers that served as reading and math interventionists, then I have two AmeriCorps volunteers, they're college students that are looking to go into education. And that whole group of six people go to each grade level three times a week in two twenty-five-minute blocks, so the kids are getting fifteen minutes of RTI three times a week. So that gives, let's say it's a grade level of four, four teachers, four classes, so we have the four teachers, regular ed teachers, we have the one special ed teacher that's with that grade level, and then I have six more interventions that I can send to them. So you can only imagine what my intervention group size is looking like. So we've covered a lot of ground in that fifteen minutes a day, because not only are our Tier Three children getting what they need, the regular ed classroom teachers are taking the Tier Two, the one in Tier One and Two children for extra time. We're going old school, we went back to those yellow literacy cards for reading, because we finally realized that a lot of the kids that are struggling in reading, they just don't have that basic knowledge of phonetics and how that works. So we have gone back to that for our Tier Two groups. Our special ed teachers, if the child is already being pulled by our interventions for Tier Three, we leave them, but if it's a child that we know is about to go into interventions, we have the special ed teacher going and doing some, just as an intervention, just as extra, over and above, some different types and methods to work with the children on. They have also gone back to using the yellow card skills. And it was really great, because Shannon Porter came up to me, she's first grade special ed this year, and she said, "Oh, my God, Susan, they're starting to get it, they didn't know this stuff, and they're getting it like this." And I said, "Well, maybe that's going to be, it's not wrong something." Then, at the same time, some of the regular ed teachers in that Tier Two time, they are pulling some of the children that need primary talent pool in the lower grades so they can do some enrichment. So we have tried to cover every base during that time, so we've been very intentional. So if at that time, just not interfere with lunch or related arts or recess, that's down and dirty RTI time. That's best. Do you have any questions?
Any other questions from Ms. Hoffman?
The writing, you know, writing's my thing.
Yeah.
So I always like to hear an update.
And Ellen is right, when we have so many children that are at so many different levels, yes, I did tell my teachers that I wanted them to take one of the Lucy Cawkins units, and I wanted them to carry that out to, you know, I wanted them to implement that unit. I did not force them to do the entire Lucy Cawkins this year, because I don't feel that we're there yet. Like you say, when we have children that don't know whether to capitalize a sentence or punctuation at the end, the craft of writing is not my first priority. My first priority is getting them reading so that the writing is going to come next. What I think what I would like to do, if I had my brothers, is that we started with our lower grades, build them in the Lucy Cawkins, starting from day one, so that we can build on it from there. Now, she's right, same poll of my teachers, third grade meets at Justice once a month. And it is kind of the consensus, if you ask the classroom teacher, which do you find that they feel is the most useful and the easiest to follow and the most pain for your buck in a short amount of time, it is the Journeys. I'm not going to say that Journeys is the best writing, I'm not. But I think right now, where there's so much in Journeys, and we know that there's parts of the Journeys that we're not even implementing, and we're doing it with fidelity, and we're having to pick and choose what we want to do. I want to make sure our reading is where it needs to be, look at our writing. My third and fourth grades do what we call life scores. Third grade was just in, two weeks ago, before the snow, and we sit down, we pull in as many extra people as we can, the kids going to cafeteria, they're given an open response question, and we have people on the spot that can give a child feedback. They do the first part of the question, they don't move on until it's a four. So we're kind of coaching them in addition in writing through that, through those life scores. So we do that periodically off of the year.
So what is the writing program, the actual writing program that you're using?
Well, it's a mix of the Journeys and Lucy Cawkins.
And at first grade?
Same thing.
And second grade, same thing. So when did they actually start Lucy Cawkins?
I allowed them to choose the unit that they wanted to use out of Lucy Cawkins, and they implemented it at the time they felt this best.
Okay. And does that program, you can just pick any unit one, it's not dependent on having had the other ones?
No, and it could be, and we just, we haven't tried, but that was the way we chose to implement it this year.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions from Ms. Hoffman? Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Mr. Rose from Shear.
Are they thinking all our, is that allowed now, Sam?
You always have.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Well, you don't want to hear it, but the, if you look at our, once again, the fall scores are based on the previous year's skills, and up to winter is the whole year's skills, which we've only been in school from, you know, obviously December. Kindergarten first grade is tested on January eleventh, which, those two weeks, we had some snow days in there, so that just went back a few weeks. So I'm not at all worried about first grade, I feel like I have the strongest first grade team in the county, and I'm not worried about fourth grade, although the numbers are a little lower than I would like. But if you look at our first grade from winter two thousand and fourteen in reading to winter two thousand, second grade, let's start at second grade, second grade, they were forty-one point six, and now they're forty-nine point three, second grade, that was first grade, second grade forty-four point four to forty-five point four, third grade fifty-eight point six to forty-six point five. Also, we have our largest concentration of special ed students in first grade and third grade, and they are tested, of course, with no accommodations on math. And I think we have eleven in first grade and twelve in third grade. I'm pretty pleased with the math scores. Last year in math at third grade, we only had six students in the entire third grade that were novice. So hopefully, we can improve those six to where, and actually, I think only two of them are still with us, but, so hopefully, we can bring those two up to non-novice, so maybe we can meet non-novice school in math in fourth grade this year, let's hope. Second grade thirty-eight point seven to forty-two point eight, fifty-one to fifty-two point eight for our third or our fourth graders. So, you know, we do have a lot of strategies in place, a lot of the things that they've all talked about, with the life scoring and the red groups and the reassigning the students to groups based on math. We did lose two of our class activities this year, a half-time math person, so we do not have as many people that are helping us with our groups, but we have quality people. And we have dedicated time in our schedule for reading and math, RTI, that is not taken out of the whole group activities. Also, we, you know, I've called my attendance clerk today, because the more I thought about the numbers, I thought, you know, I just want to know. We have added seventy-eight students this year and dropped sixty-eight students, and in that, first grade has gained twenty-eight students, which is a whole half-sized class plus a U, and lost nineteen. So that grade level has experienced a lot of transition this year, and, you know, it might not seem like a lot, but when, every time you get a student in, that teacher has to stop and introduce them to the class and talk to the parents and do all these things. I'm not making excuses, I'm just saying we've had a few obstacles this year. Kindergartens, we've had fourteen in, fifteen in, fourteen out. Second grade, twelve in, thirteen out. Third grade, fifteen in, fourteen, twelve out. Fourth grade, fifteen, ten in, fifteen out. So it's a complete revolving door.
What was your total again, Mark?
Please?
What was your total again?
In, we were, we brought in seventy-eight, and we exited sixty-eight. And some of those, it's been more than one time, you know, several times during the year they'll come, they'll go to Conkrad for a while, they'll go to Stroud for a while, and then, you know, but I just thought that was very interesting as I looked at my numbers. So I feel like we did an extraordinary job with all the ins and outs of the students and the revolving door that seems to be, oh, if sheer. But anyway, we do, we also got to hire the novice reduction teacher after Christmas, and she started working with third and fourth graders, mostly in reading, and she's mostly using the Lexedea program. We also have the Reflex Math Grant that one of our special ed teachers wrote, and she works with, I think it's mostly first and primary students, and she has about, I think she has a license for about thirty, is she the pool. Another thing, you know, that we do not retain in kindergarten, so our kids go on to first grade, and then we start thinking about an extra year of primary once they get to first grade, so that also could play a, because, I mean, our kindergarten numbers are strong, and they were last year as well, and we have a great kindergarten team. And then also, one of the things we're going to start doing is we have the After School ESS program, and we're starting February twenty-ninth for our third and fourth grade students, and most of our third and fourth grade teachers will be the ones teaching those classes. We, you know, our site-based council purchased the Lucy Cawkins writing program, and we tried to implement it as best we could. I don't feel like the teachers were trained, so they do use the Journeys a lot. I have pockets of teachers that use Lucy Cawkins-type activities, first grade and third grade primarily. I have an excellent fourth grade teacher who does language arts, and I feel like she has mastered her own way of doing writing, and I think she's full of Lucy Cawkins and Journeys and Treasures and wherever she was at Fayette County, all these things together to come up with writing activities. And that's another thing with math, you know, we don't get to see that writing skill part for the open response type of questions and the math type of questions, so we've encouraged our teachers to use what they can of it, they can pull up unit, opinions, literary, you know, nonfiction, whatever, whatever they're working on, to use the Lucy Cawkins. But I've not pushed it as I probably should have, but it is so in-depth and so hard. I did it at Glendover when I was at Fayette County, and I observed it being also in pockets there as well. And it, there are some great things, it's just not user-friendly, and I think, you know, if the teachers were to probably be trained on how to use it, I think we would do a better job with Lucy Cawkins.
So what would be involved, and this may not be something you can answer, Mark, what's involved in getting teachers trained on Lucy Cawkins?
Well, it's a lot of money, and it's several days of training.
Okay. How much and how many?
Like four days, and it's probably about fourteen.
Four days.
One day's about fourteen thousand dollars.
Because our problem is that they are booked this summer. We've checked on a four-day training for forty thousand dollars, and we cannot give it four days. We didn't have one day set up for training, but it's not enough.
So when is the one day?
Well, we didn't, we're not going to go for the one day because we didn't feel like that was going to be, if you put all the kindergarten, first, second, and third, or fourth, or how it was broken into, in one setting for one day, we just didn't feel like that that was going to be an effective way to get them trained. And it was more just going to be an overview of the program, which, you know, they can read the table of contents if they so choose to. So we just feel like if we can have the breadth of training, it would be much.
So are we going to be another year without really doing much with Lucy Cawkins? This is going to be the third year we're not doing much with it?
It's not that we're not doing much with it. We, the teachers are doing what they can with it. I just don't think that, like I said, when I look at it, it doesn't look very user-friendly. It's not laid out like the Journeys writing program is, where it's, you know, you do this on a certain day, this on a certain, and I know that doesn't work for every child, but, you know, when we have as many kids in and out and moving around as we do, we have to get some skill-type-based writing done first.
Okay, when our kid, when your kids leave and go to a different school, okay, if we were all, are we all using, we're all using Journeys, right?
Oh, yes.
Everyone is using Journeys, and everyone has Lucy Cawkins as well.
All classroom teachers.
Right. So if a child leaves Shear to go to Conkrad, wouldn't some of that exposure be comparable?
It would be if we were all doing the same unit in Lucy at the same time, because just like Ms. Hillman said, you know, like my first grade might have wanted to do the personal narrative type one, where her first grade, her first grade might want to do, you know, nonfiction or fiction or informational or, so that's kind of where the, you know, and with our grade level meetings, which have been very successful this year, working with Debbie Carter and writing the units and so forth for Journeys. with Debbie Carter and writing the units and so forth for Journeys, Debbie's kinda done like a crosswalk of Lucy and Journeys and what's in those units. And that's, that's afforded the teachers a little bit more insight into that.
Okay.
Yep.
Judy, the other thing, Lucy Colkins is the time process that goes into it.
Yes.
It's, it is so much more time than a thirty, you can't do it in thirty minutes, even though, you know, they want you to. And it's with two blocks of a thirty-minute RTI in reading and math, and then you've got your ninety minutes of math, and then you've got ninety minutes of reading, and you've got related arts and lunch. It's very challenging by the time to do the full of it.
To dedicate to what it needs to be.
To what it needs to be, that's the other challenge, too.
I don't think we've thrown it out.
No.
It's just, it's, it's just.
That burner?
It's not on the top of our, I'm like Susan, I'd rather for them to be able to read first, you know, because good readers, a lot of times, are good writers.
Yes, and good writers are proficient readers. You know, some of that, you know, I see a lot that, you know, kind of goes hand in hand together. You know, it seems that we have, we've really done a lot with, you know, putting a lot of emphasis on our language arts program, which I have supported, and, you know, I really, really support that. But I don't want us to lose the writing component that seems to not have as much emphasis. You know, whenever we have, you know, when the principals come and we talk about writing, and I'm always asking about writing, I'm not sure I'm, well, I'm not seeing the progress that I would like to see in writing.
We have a very specific writing policy. And all of the related arts teachers have to do writing pieces, we have writing folders that follow the students through, so those things are still happening.
Okay.
Yeah, we've not abandoned that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next up is Ms. Brown, Strode Station.
Good evening. Again, I think, I don't want to repeat myself, as my colleagues have shared, that the fall test, of course, is based on previous year's knowledge, and then the winter test is where they are at that time in December on a whole-year test. And sometimes, it's that time of the test session for me, for our second grade, because we're such a large school, that, you know, some of them had to take the test, take the test, stop, and then go to lunch, and then come back to finish it, which I think does affect, you know, their score. And if you look from winter to winter, from two fourteen to two fifteen in our kindergarten, we are seeing growth. First grade, same thing. This is reading, I'm sorry, I should've said that. And then second grade is, is our area that we're really concerned about, and in reading, second grade, that's why we invited our second grade students that are at a novice level to join in our extended school service program, which we've already started. So we have a second grade group of students that are having small group after-school instruction on reading. And then we also service our third and fourth grade students for E S S. I'm gonna, I'm very proud of the progress that we've made, you know, here at Strode. I feel like we're coming together as a faculty and as a school, and we're really focused on instruction. So I'm very pleased with the growth that we've had so far, and we continue to monitor that all the time during P L Cs. In math, if you look at winter to winter, you again see growth, except for in first grade, which could be the students, you know, we're always looking at, I guess I just want to say that math is a universal screener, it's given on one day of that student's life, and there's a lot of instruction that goes in before and after that day. So we do try to meet our individual needs through instruction, through RTI, and we're partnering, partnering with Avery, which is out of the University of Louisville, but it's connected with K D E on academic and behavioral response to intervention, and they're coming back in March to code our classrooms again. They coded them in the fall about student interactions and engagement, and they're coming back in March. So we're using that data, too. We have a monthly meeting with the K D E representative, and we're always looking for ways to improve our instruction in math and in reading. So second grade is, I'm sorry, first grade from fall, winter to winter, it has dropped a little bit, but I must say that I have seen such growth with our teachers using Envisions for the second year. It's been good. I think it's, you can see growth over time with those teachers and the standards being taught in a curriculum that, you know, spirals, so that's been.
What are you calling a little bit of draw?
In my winter, first grade.
From sixty-one to thirty-seven.
To fifty-six in math.
Okay, I see, okay.
Yeah. So that's, you know, I'm worried about my second grade in reading, and that's why we invited them to join our E S S time. And then in first grade, but again, if you look at them as kindergartners, I guess, we could do that, too. There's still, you know, of course, this is first grade curriculum, that's another thing that we're, you know, you're, you're looking at their growth from kindergartners to first grade in math, and, you know, I'd also, we have broken down data by each teacher, and so we meet with them during P L Cs, and we look at individual kids and what they need to improve. The students set goals with their teachers for the math test, they keep track of their data in their data notebooks, and so we're always trying to make the student have some accountability in that, in their own learning. In third grade, I feel good about where we are from last year, fifty-five, 2014, to sixty point eight in the winter, and my fourth grade team is rocking it out with thirty-three point three last winter to sixty-two point nine. So, and again, it's a different group of kids, we all know that, but it's good to see that We are, I also have a novice reduction teacher that's working strictly with third and fourth grade students, and she comes every day, she's with those kids either in third grade in the morning and then bounces back between the five, five home rooms in third grade and five home rooms in fourth grade. So she's working really hard on that, and, you know, we're still, we have our RTI block in our master schedule for our reading interventionist. In kindergarten and in fourth grade, with our novice reduction teacher, I don't really have any other reading instruction teachers that are doing that, so teachers are pulling small groups and trying to meet those needs, too. You know, we feel like there's, there's definitely a need for some parent-home connection with growth academically, so we're still trying to kind of educate our parents on how they can help their students with reading. We've had, I've had two students that have leveled out of Lexia and one during the snow days that we had last week, she leveled out, she's a fourth, third grader that leveled out of Lexia, so she's gonna be in the Reading Plus, which is, I think that's the same thing that they use at Baker.
Yes.
Oh, Gustin?
Yes, I was using, because I had.
Okay. Yeah. But anyway, so we're, you know, the kids are loving Lexia, we also use that program. It's a, it's a great way to help drill down to the individual needs that that student may have, that may be blocking them from being a proficient reader, and it does allow teachers to download individualized lesson plans or activities that they can work with those kids on. And I'm very pleased with our Envisions. Writing, okay. I, I would echo what my colleagues have shared. We did purchase the Lucy Colkins materials last year with a two, it was a two-hour P D that was provided to the teachers on a Flex Day. I don't feel like they've had enough training, and so that's, that was my big issue, I think. We do have a writing plan that our S V D M has established, and just like Mark said, we have not abandoned the writing folders or the pieces that each grade level is responsible for. I do see teachers, some of them embrace the Lucy Colkins, and they, I think it's because they've had prior training in it. I think training is an issue, but I would say that for at Strode, our teachers do more of a combined Journeys and Lucy Colkins.
Any other questions for Ms. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Mountson Baker.
Right. Very good, thank you. Good evening. I'm very excited tonight to present our map data and our long illustrious history of Baker Intermediate. These are the highest winter scores we have seen. And, you know, I am, I am pumped about it, so I wanna explain this, no matter how you compare this, but I need another, if you have the longitudinal overtime for the entire county, I'm gonna go between hours and that, but if I compare our current students to themselves, how our current fifth grade did his fourth grade, and how our current sixth did his fifth, in fifth grade reading, if I'm comparing them to themselves, we have seen an increase in proficiency, a three-point-three percent increase in proficiency. In sixth grade reading, we have seen an eight-point-one percent increase in proficiency. In math, comparing students from winter to winter, that's what I'm comparing, in fifth grade math, compared to where they were in fourth grade last year at winter, we've seen an increase of thirty-two point five to fifty-one point nine for a gain of nineteen-point-four percent. In sixth grade math, we have seen eight-tenths of an increase. If we compare the students that we currently have in our building to the fifth and sixth grade that we had at Baker last year, if we look at fifth grade reading, that is a thirteen-point-three percent gain. In sixth grade reading, it's a one-point-nine percent gain. In fifth grade math, it's a three-point-five percent gain, and in sixth grade math, it's a thirteen-point-nine percent gain. So no matter how you compare it, our numbers are high. If you're comparing spring to this winter, or last winter to this winter, some pretty large increases. Some things that you can't see, um, there's some successes that I'd like to share with you. This is, this year, we have had the luxury of two full-time interventionists, one being a full-time math and one being a full-time reading. We have a structured RTI program. Of the thirty-one students in RTI in the sixth, in sixth grade reading, eighty-eight percent of those students have seen, have seen positive growth. And when I say positive growth, that can be anywhere from one point up to forty-one. We gained two-hundred-and-seventeen points on average. Every one of our RTI students in sixth grade reading went up fourteen-point-five points. In fifth grade reading, really no different, eighty-seven-point-five, we've seen positive growth for an average of ten, ten-point growth among those students. In fifth grade math, seventy-three percent have seen gains in RTI math, and then seventy-nine percent in sixth grade. So we are making gains, and I'm very proud of our staff. I know this is just one data point, I wish I could bring my unit assessments and show you how well they're doing on the teacher assessments, but we're very proud of the work we are doing. Some of the things that we're going to continue to do, obviously, I spoke about our RTI instruction with our math and reading interventionists. We also have five one-hundred-day focused instructional resource teachers who are working in small groups, they're also working in a co-teaching setting, they're working one-on-one with students. Our bell, our start bell begins at seven-thirty. Our interventionists are pulling kids at seven A M, thirty minutes before the start of the school day. They're having breakfast, and they're working on math and reading skills. Something that we have implemented, Ms. Jacobs, my assistant principal and I, we have implemented Power Walks this year. Since November, we've completed almost two-hundred of those. Now, Power Walks, it's a program, Mr. Bean, Mr. Bowden introduced it to me at a conference this summer. It's a ten-minute, five-minute, ten-minute snapshot of what's going on in the classroom. You can send it electronically, and teachers instantly get feedback. We've completed almost two-hundred of those. We do Friday, Friday Flex Time in fifth grade, that's where teachers look at the standards that they covered Monday through Thursday, and then they group the kids on Friday based on their needs. Something, we call it enrichment in the sixth grade, it's pretty much the same thing. We have morning lab times for mathematics, Math Excel, I Excel, reading theory. We do not have Lexia, that's something that I put on my wish list, and I know a couple, well, actually, probably all the professors put on their wish list, but that's something we would like to implement next year. It is fairly expensive, though, as well as Reading Plus, is that what it is, Mr. Howard? We, we hold in-house progress monitoring meetings, much like I'm presenting our data holistically as a school. Teachers bring their data, we do that once a month with every teacher in the building. We do that with special ed students, we have progress monitoring meetings with Ms. Mann. We do grade-level planning meetings after school. Something that we did not do effectively last year was to pair our special education students with proctors prior to K prep. So we had, we did have some students last year come K prep, they had a proctor that they were unfamiliar with, so we're starting to build those relationships, and by the time K prep comes, our goal is to have every child who receives accommodations to have at least tested, whether it be a quiz, a mastery check, what have you, at least twice with their proctor. That's something new that we are doing. Let's see. We are, we do Baker one-on-one, those, we do Baker one-on-one on the days that the midterms and the report cards go home. We have a goal-setting handbook, students reflect on how they did that four and a half weeks and set goals for the four and a half weeks ahead. Something that I've implemented in January, and it's hard to get traction with all these snow days, but we have the Baker Motivation Chamber. I call students into the conference room, and it's decorated, and the kids, they come into music, and I conference with, the goalless conference with every child, all eight-hundred-and-seven, I think that we have between now and K prep. When students enter that, they receive a copy of how they did on last year's K prep. We talk about setting goals, what can they do between now and May to take it to the next level. They have a contract with me that they sign, they take that in their locker, locker, and I do random locker checks. If I see a child putting their books up for the morning or getting something out of their locker, I go up to them, let's see the contract between you and I that we have. If they have the contract ready, they get a Baker buck. So it's motivation of kids, I've seen kids leave the motivation chamber, come back and say, "Mr. Mountson, I need help on reading." So immediately, I take that child's name to the RTI teachers and say, "Let's take a look at this kid, what can we do for this kid?" We've had a couple of instances like that. Something that we did not do last year, that we are doing it, Miss Constance does a good job of making sure that we, we do it, and that is our map testing for language mechanics, both fifth and sixth grade. We administered it in the fall, and we are going to do it in the spring, beginning March the seventh, both fifth and sixth, to see what kind of growth we've had in, in language mechanics. We do a lot of mentoring groups, Real Man Club, Soul Sisters, Partners in Education, Book Buddies, Susan Jacobs has done a wonderful job, every team, and we have six teams, six active, six teams between fifth and sixth grade. Each team has at least two mentors that come weekly. We have over twenty regular volunteers that come to Baker on a weekly basis. Cannot say enough about our PAST program, it has been instrumental with some of our students with extreme behaviors. It's, it's a true model to the past, and I encourage elementary principals, and I know Mr. Howard already has it, and Mr. Bowden, but, you know, the system, the PAST program, how it was designed, it works, and we can see a clear impact on the day-to-day operations at Baker. Six, I bet I can read your mind.
Yes.
Writing.
Speaking of language mechanics, tell us about writing.
I'm not gonna sugarcoat it for you, when it comes to Lucy Colkins, we do not implement it. We did buy the kits, we did receive a two-hour training from Ms. Bernhard last year. I can't even say it's partially implemented, it is not.
So what are we using?
We're using Journeys, and then every staff member in Sciences, Social Studies, as well as E L A, they are implementing what's known as L D C, Literacy Collaborative Design. They've received at least six. And then, every staff member in Sciences, Social Studies, as well as ELA, they are implementing what's known as LDC, Literacy Collaborative Design. They've received at least six hours of training on that. And if you're not familiar with that, it's an extensive walk through the writing process. For example, our fifth grade social studies completed earlier this year. They completed an LDC. They had to. They had a focus question. The students had to pick whether early explorers were heroes or villains. Everybody had the same question, and then they had to take a stance on it because of the opinion writing within fifth grade. They worked with Ms. Conley, our librarian, to pull resources. It's really a research paper, and students will complete three of those each year. We've had a large, a big emphasis on ERQs. We've had training from Ms. Danielle Ward from Campbell. She's come to train our staff. We have a new acronym. I think I stood before you last year and told you about Run, Wrap, See You, and you all asked me what it stood for. And it has so many letters, and it had more letters than the alphabet. We have narrowed that down to RACE. That is a new acronym to address ERQs for all the content areas. And then, we are working on On-Demand currently. And Ms. Ward has also come to Baker to train us on that, as well as Ms. Carter. We have a lot of PD this summer. I'm actually working with Ms. Whitesides and Wisconsinide to find writing developments for our teachers this summer. We have an extensive writing plan. We kind of do the old-school portfolios. Each teacher at Baker has to get a piece, a particular type of piece, whether it be writing to learn, writing to demonstrate, writing with authentic purpose. Each nine weeks, they have to have a piece for their caseload, their child's writing goal. So, we do a lot with writing. I know means is on the back burner, but Lucy Coffins, we purchased it. That's what I can tell you.
Any other questions, Mr. Mounts? Thank you. Last but not least is Mr. Howard with Campbell.
Afternoon or evening? I just wanted to be there, I guess, right? To put it simply, we've had a lot of growth this year at RDC. Couldn't stand here in front of me last year and say I was happy with where we're at. Our scores on the K-Prep represent that that's in the past. I'm not going to make excuses for it. Only going to own it, get better. Kind of what we're going to do here. Basically, if you look at reading, which is at the top, we feel pretty good about where we're at. If you look at compared to scores last year at each grade level, not only are we higher than the winter score, we're higher than the spring score. We didn't have many large drops, with the one exception with eighth grade math. So, now we've had that, we've actually started planning and put an interventionist in just for eighth grade. We also have built our master schedule around having an intervention enrichment period. That's 40 minutes every single day. And we basically have turned it into our tier-level system. So, we have our Tier 1/2, where we actually, our teachers refer kids two days a week based on where they're at now and their needs. So, if they're a little bit behind, or if they've missed a certain, you know, four or five days, we come to them and say, "Before," we'd say, "Come after school," or "Go home and have your parents help you." But here's a newsflash. A lot of our kids ride the big yellow bus in a can't state, and some of them don't have appropriate support at home. And so, we've taken that barrier away by building that in our schedule. The second way we've done that is we have a mentoring, like I said, period, that we have interventionists that are full-time interventionists. So, before we were tied to one money, and we'd have one intervention teacher. What I've basically been able to do now is every teacher in my building is an interventionist during that period. So, they either provide intervention, or they provide enrichment. It's something that the kids, it motivates them to do well because they know, by golly, when we take the math test, Mr. Howard's going to put me in intervention class because I've done away with the excuse of, "Well, we don't have enough resources." Because I've got my entire staff. And again, they weren't jumping for joy at the beginning, I'll be honest with you. But we've come together, and we know this is what we need to do. I call it becoming great, right? We're on the path to greatness. The third thing we've done in that intervention period is we have a mentoring, we call it Mentoring Wednesdays, right in the middle of the week for a reason. So, every staff member in my building has a mentoring group. I have a mentoring group. My assistant principal, I've got 14 seventh graders and 14 eighth graders. Actually, Mr. Wilson's son's one of my mentees. We've worked hand-in-hand with him and his mother to make sure that Mr. Wilson comes a long way proficient. So, his dad don't get mad at me. He's in a better seat now. Something like that. So, we've been very intentional with the process with writing. We do have Ms. Danielle Ward, I won't brag on her. She's the district writer coordinator, but first and foremost, she's an RDC teacher, my core content leader. She runs, she pretty much runs the show with writing. We have a standing writing committee. We do collaborate with Mr. Mounts and his staff because we feel like, to align the ship, we're constantly redoing things. You can't be in a school two years and then go to another school for two years and do something completely different and get there. So, our writing programs are very, very similar because Ms. Ward's worked with his staff and my staff. We use the same acronym. We have the same system. We have intentionality with writing across content areas. Not only are all my departments planned together every single day, we get a common planning. You don't see that a lot of places. We have monthly name and claim meetings, so they sit with me, Ms. Bruto, Ms. mentioned, and they present their kids. It holds them accountable, holds me accountable. We look at, in our reading, our reading and writing. Actually, the social studies teachers present their data on that as well. Science teachers present their math data because they have a 30, 60, 90-day plan on how they're teaching reading and writing in their content area. So, it's not, no longer the job of the ELA teacher to teach reading and writing. So, we've enabled, instead of having 70 minutes of instruction, we've turned it into, every day on reading and writing, we've turned it into 140 minutes every single day. So, we're very proud of that initiative. It was what we're doing. Not only do I have intervention with reading, but I also have writing intervention time. So, that's about the end, also with writing enrichment time. So, we started our first-ever online RDC school newspaper so we could reward kids, get them involved in a career pathway. We coordinated with Mr. Bowden at GRC, Mrs. Crosby, kind of mentor, my teacher. So, again, what we're doing is connecting both with the school above us, with the school that feeds into us. Because like we talked about last time, you know, I get kids for two years, and I replace half my building every single year. It's an interesting dynamic. I kind of like it because you can change culture very quickly, and that's what we've been able to do. So, it's been a long morning, if you guys, or afternoon, if you guys want to ask me questions, I'm very good to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Okay? Thank you.
Rock and roll. Thank you.
All right. The last to discuss the entire district is Wisconsinide.
This document should tie it all together. After about an hour and a half, it should, hopefully. Hope anybody have any questions?
Anything alarm you for anything, or you feel like we're right where we should be?
I do have some alarms. I think it would be in the lower primary grades. My recommendation would be to use ESS money and target those groups. If you know if it's standing out at you at, you know, 40%, 42%, that, what are you doing with the other 58%?
I'm sure you've had these discussions with these people here. Anything board-wise that we need to be doing to help you out in this time?
Well, I could come up with a needs list. I mean, off the top of my head, we do use MAP as a universal screener. And so, when we come before you, it does look like we're predicting proficiency. And we do lose sight that, yes, these numbers may not be great, but the reason we use those numbers is to target the kids that aren't scoring proficient. You only see the kids that are scoring proficient because the other kids we're targeting. So, if you want to provide additional funding or some type of additional interventionist or extracurricular people, more boots on the ground, I always think that makes the difference. You know, I'm not a big fan of Lexia, so, guys, you know, that's, I'll just say it. Technology's not my, I feel like the human factor makes a difference, but that would be something that I would entertain.
As we, I hear a lot about the interventionalist, interventionists. Do we have, at some point in time, you probably don't right now, but at some point in time, will we have some data to see where they're taking them from and taking them to?
Yes. From the beginning to the end, and that's what I would like to be able to present. We will, we're also doing, and we've kind of lost sight of this. We tested every elementary student at the beginning of the year on reading and math major content skills. And so, at the end of the year, they will take that as an exit standard for student growth. So, I will have that data as well because MAP, you have to realize, is a national test. It doesn't just test core content. It throws in a lot of skills that we don't teach at a certain time when we're testing. So, that's, you will hear that. That's a frustration level for teachers. If they're not going to teach the Envisions unit on decimals until March, but they show up in November, some of our students might have a preconceived notion of how to attack decimals, others may not. So, that's frustration for them. But what we have to think about is it is a universal screener. What can we do to provide the students that aren't at the proficient level? How can we help? What can we do to target those kids? And we are doing a training with principals on Thursday to hit some reading and math. What does good, you know, Journeys lesson look like? We're going to talk about some writing with Journeys on Thursday with them. And then, take a unit of study of fractions from kindergarten all the way through high school.
Has anybody looked at, at some point in time, looked at the difference between your gap kids that are in this part of it and see where they're at compared to just some kids that you're talking about that just might have taken a test and maybe not been at that point?
Right. No, but that would be a good study, is to look at the students that are our gap children and follow them through. And I know, you know, you've heard a lot about novice reduction. That's going to be the big key words, and we're trying to get ahead of that because a lot of the kids that aren't on this paper in this percentage are our novice kids.
The reason why I ask that is I have a young son right now that's struggling in reading, and sometimes he just shuts down. Sometimes it's not because he's, you know, he just hasn't got there either, you know, so.
Developmentally, sometimes they're not there.
Lucy Coffins, we seem to, we've hit on that several different times. And I guess the thing that bothers me right now, it looks like we were prepared to invest $40,000 this summer for this, and now we are not going to.
Right.
I have some concerns about what's filling the bill here. And speaking as a past principal, when you try to implement a program and teachers just get bits and pieces of it, sooner or later, that becomes a negative for that teacher. And if we have to carry that over for another year, are we wasting money the next year because we're trying to do something, and that teacher always says, "Well, this doesn't work."
Exactly.
And if they're not trained, it's probably not going to work. So, I have some concerns about where we're going with this and what we need to do.
Okay. Let's do a little background on Lucy. When we decided to implement and purchase, because it wasn't a district purchase, it was a school purchase, we didn't have Journeys. And so, we knew we needed a writing program. So, we did purchase Lucy, but at that time, we didn't provide that in-depth training because the schools did not purchase all in July. They purchased like some in August, some in September, some in November, so.
We tend to purchase when we get money.
Yeah. So, you know, then at that point, we did, we, by the time that October day came around, everybody had it. So, we did like a two-hour introduction, and we didn't go through Heinemann or Hope Mifflin through Lucy. We just had our content specialists do it, just to kind of get them in, to open up. But there is a lot of reading, and you can't teach the curriculum without reading it. I mean, I'm just going to be honest. I couldn't do it. So, we tabled it. We said, you know, kind of play around with it, pilot it, do a unit. Then, this past summer rolls around, and we adopted Journeys. That's a lot of training. We also picked up another four days of Envisions because we felt like they needed that math. So, Lucy, the training got dropped. The focus at the district level was to provide four days of Lucy this summer. When we investigated, we could not get the four days, not available until like October. Well, then, I can't take teachers out of classrooms in October. We could invest in a one-day training for our elementary schools at $14,000. We had a very serious conversation in January. It didn't look like it was going to fly. I didn't want to invest in a training, and then not have the buy-in. So, I tabled it.
Again, my biggest concern is just making sure those classroom teachers and principals, if we believe in this program, you know, let's find a way to do it. If not, then we're, that's an awful lot of money to.
To invest. I really need the buy-in. If everybody wants to do it, we can do it.
I'm just going to make sure that we feel like that's what we need to do, or we need to stick with Journeys, or whatever it is we need to do.
But how in-depth is Journeys compared to Lucy Coffins? And do we want an in-depth program? Well, I'm not going to speak about that tonight. I do have a document that I can send you that will give you a comparison between the two. It's not as in-depth as Lucy, Journeys is not. Because it's a shorter timeframe of teaching. When you're looking at the classroom, that's what they need. That Lucy does take a lot of investing, not just on the teacher's part, but in the classroom. It is very time-consuming. And so, Journeys is a much quicker way to teach writing.
And what sort of results do we have about how kids write after Journeys or after Coffins?
Right. We don't have a study on that yet. We would have to look, I mean, really and truly, if you're going to compare programs, you need to jump in and do one, and you need to do it really well, and do it for a couple of years, and see where your scores go. Because I think what we're doing is we're pulling from this one, we're pulling from that one, and it's not going to work. It's hard to do that because you'll start a Lucy's unit, but then you might go over here and do a Journeys worksheet. And the kids are getting mixed, you know, and then if we move, if I moved to a different school, and they're only using Journeys, but I was using, I was in the middle of a Lucy writings workshop, it may stop. I don't know. So, we're just kind of all over the place. We need to kind of figure out what we want to do, and then, like I always say, we've got to do it for about six years to see if it works. You can't do it a year and say, "This is what the data shows, it was working."
But we're in about the third year of Lucy, and nothing basically has been done.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Wilson. I was out of the room.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is GRC High School Dual-Credit Expansion Proposal, Mr. Bowden.
I think what you have there is a proposal that we first brought up back, I think, in November. It was an idea that we had floated about. Apparently, we offer two classes of US History, two sections of English, and a couple of different math classes. We were looking at a way to give some kids some different opportunities. This proposal would allow us to probably give kids who opt for it about 30 hours of college credit at a minimal cost. I think BCTC charges, which is something we can't get around. They charge each kid $50 per semester administrative fee. So, basically, other than that $50 fee, and sometimes there may be a book associated with it, it would be the only cost for the students. I propose to phase it in next year with the junior class. They would pair up with what US History's already taught. We'd add on Communications 181, then follow it up with Sociology in the second semester, so they would end up with 12 hours. As I said, the US is currently taught by teachers that we have that certify. And then, rolling up the following year with the senior class, they would have the option to take, I guess, nine hours each semester. Basically, it's around, I think, the adjunct, the current cost for an adjunct professor was about $21, I think, $2,175, right in there with fringe benefits, so $2,800 per class total cost would be. We're looking at five classes, probably averaging. And the reason, I guess, I came up with five, currently, we have about, we average around 40 kids that take Dual-Credit US History. Some of those kids are seniors that come back and retake US, but get the Dual-Credit hours. So, we figure about 30 would be a class.
So, total cost would be about $15,000.
So total cost would be about $15,000, right?
Yeah, over two years.
I don't know how you could get any more positive feedback for just $15,000. I think it's very low.
There's, right now, I think we have 158 currently enrolled this semester in Dual Credit classes, and that's not counting the 15 KU.
That's a whole lot cheaper than paying college when you get out.
Exactly, I think it's just a great positive thing to do for students and parents especially.
Any other discussion or questions, Mr. Baldwin?
Well, I want to, this may, okay, for our juniors, where are we on their CCR part? Do they have to meet, I mean, I know it just said, we basically just have to meet the requirements that are, that BCTC sets and have the reading subscores, et cetera, but where does CCR, where does CCR performance come in? Or does it?
Well, really, the CCR really doesn't come in here with this part of, you know, when, I guess we're looking at CCR as part of the problem that we've got this year. I mean, we did really well last year, we had some really good numbers. This year, the hole got deeper. I think we started with about, started the year with about 40, 40 kids less that were college-ready. I think we started, this year, we started 109, which is about 40 less than the year before. If you look at the data going forward, the hole will probably get deeper, and it's probably going to get deeper for the next couple of years. I think the planned data that we have from the sophomores are like somewhere around 80% are not meeting benchmark in math, and roughly about equivalent in reading. And that's holding, that number's holding true even at the freshman level right now when they test it. So I think we've got some, we've got some serious issues in reading and in math right now that we have to deal with.
But our folks who would be looking at taking these classes do meet ACT benchmarks?
They have to have the reading, there's two different things, I guess. When you look at this one versus EKU, EKU says, before you can do the EKU now, you've got to have all three benchmarks. To take U.S. History or the basic public speaking, all you have to have is the reading benchmark.
I think that's good information to pass on to freshmen and sophomore parents about you can, if you meet your benchmarks, you can take college classes right now, this will cost you as much as else. That's some good information to give to them, try to get some people happening, and hopefully pushing those kids as well to get those benchmarks.
We plan to do, assuming that you guys approve this, we're going to try to have to get a meeting set up around the weekend, because we try to purge as many kids that haven't tested, go ahead and test them. I think the cutoff, March 5th, the first Friday, March is the cutoff for April testing.
That's good.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, motion is in order to accept the GRC High School Dual Credit Extension Proposal presented by Mr. Baldwin.
I'll make a motion as presented.
Presented by Mr. Paradon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Seckel. So those in favor say aye. I oppose. She carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Next up, sign number six, Consider Approval of School Council Staffing Allocations, Ms. Amos and Dr. Bob. Thank you for making the trip up, Bob.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure to be here. What we're going to look at is allocations for the 2016-17 school year. As you know, the board must by March 1st make a tenant for that allocation. And then you have until May 1st to make a final allocation to your schools. We're going to ask you to look at Table A on Pages 2. Table A includes a lot of information. One, the second column that says projected 15-16, those were the projections that we made about this time last year, what we thought the enrollments would be at each of your schools for 15-16 year. The column labeled actual M1, that's at the end of the first month, that's how many students in each of your schools were actually enrolled. And then you can see the difference between the projection and the actual enrollment. Now, the column says actual 121-16. We took a little, kind of an extra step this year. In January, we took a look at the enrollment in each of the schools to see how it compared primarily with where were we at at the end of the first month. And you can see that you're holding real well. At the end of the first month, you had, in total, all K through 12, 5,304 students. The end of, the report we looked at in January, you had 5,324. So you're actually, have held your own really, in my opinion, quite well, because it's not uncommon for, at some point, you start to go, kind of slide down sometimes. So you're doing really well, and holding on to what came. One issue is that we actually, the actual enrollment was 52 students fewer than what we estimated it to be. And so when we look at, we looked at your first month, we looked at enrollment in January, and then we adjusted some of our projections. And you can see that it's holding, we're projecting at this point that you'll have about 5,321 students in K through 12 when school starts next year. And so, you know, you've really kind of leveled off, and that's probably, I mean, that's not a bad thing at all. You're holding on to students. Even if some are leaving and some are coming, the total numbers are staying very consistent across the school year. Now, as a precaution, we're going to come back and take a look at them again at the end of March to see whether we're still holding before you have to make a final staffing allocation to the schools. Just kind of some extra steps in the process to try to get as close to 100% accurate as we can. A little disappointed, this last year, we probably came in about 98.9% accuracy in total. But there are some things that, it's real tough to get folks to tell you when they're coming or when they're moving. So you don't really know. Now, what does that do in terms of how you staff your schools? If you look at Table B on Page 3, you have a listing that shows what the allocation was to each of the school centers for the 2015-16 session. Now, it's taken out of this the growth teachers that you put in place when school starts, okay? And then the next column, Certified Teachers for 2016-17, based on the enrollment projection and following the allocation guidelines of the school district. This is what the allocation at this point, prior to March, is going to look like. And across the district, it will call, it calls for a reduction of three classroom teachers across the district. And you say, well, the enrollment's pretty close to what we had first month, and to where we are on the projection, why would there be a reduction? And then, so you go all the way back to Table 1, and you see what we staffed on, and you see where we missed, fairly substantially. So it's not the number of students that actually showed up, it's what we did last year at this time in terms of projections. And how many staff was it going to take to handle that projection? And in some cases, we missed low, in some cases, we missed high. And so in certain circumstances, you know, as I've always told you, and many of you know that in March, we can, we can be conservative. In September, if we miss, and you've got, really have more teachers in your classrooms than what your guidelines call for, you're going to keep them for a year because that's the law. You can't send them home, you can add them in September, you just can't send them home in September. So this is, I think, very close. I would be, you know, I'd be pretty encouraged, and like I said earlier, as we get closer, if something happens, then we may be back at the April Board Meeting, upper dan, because you have one more shot. We'll try to get it as close as we can before you have to make the final allocation. Now, Table C on Page 4 is an important table to look at, because if you go to the bottom line, it says pupil teacher ratio. This is only looking at the teachers, and the regular classroom teachers and the students. And you can see for each of your schools what the projected pupil teacher ratio is all the way across each of your schools, and what it would be for the district. And, you know, that's a, that's a pretty good, pretty good ratio. And then I would throw in, keep in mind, it doesn't include all the teachers that will be assigned to the school. You'll have some, definitely will have special, special education teachers. You will have other teachers that are paid from the grant funds that you place in the school. But this calls for a total of 243 regular classroom teachers in your schools for next school year. Now, Table D at the bottom of Page 4 looks at some other certified personnel, and there's no projected change in what your needs would be for 16-17 and what they have been in order for 15-16. On Page 5, if you look at Table E1, this is looking at a class, a school council classified personnel, there's no change projected for 16-17 from what we had, what you have currently in 15-16. And then on Table E2, you can see by school, and you can see that there's no change projected in your classified staff. On Page 6, Section 6 allocation would be, we already, we do know this much, we know that if the governor's budget doesn't change, the seat base would be 3981. Again, 3.5% of that's $139.34 per student in average daily attendance, and that is at this point the recommended Section 6 allocation per student basis. The other item I'd point out is this allocation contains no Section 7. Questions?
No questions, Mr. Bob.
No, my 12, I just weren't answered.
Did we get, did we get through them all, Mr. Seckel? Then superintendent, there is a recommendation that the tentative allocations be approved.
I went through this with the fine people come also, and I think this reflects where we are as a district and as our population. I appreciate you all, when we come back, when we get some members in March, if you want to have a guess.
Kind of make the best guess you can, sir.
Any other discussion? If not, a motion is in order to consider approval of the 2016-2017 tentative allocation to school council as presented. Move. Motion by Mr. Paradon.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries five to zero. Next up, sign number seven, Consider Approval of Campbell State Academic Team Competition Trip, March 19th through 21st, 2016. These are the kids we honored tonight, right?
These were. There's been a slight adjustment due to the deadlines of getting things on the agenda. I try to go at everything, think we're going to win, and win. Unfortunately, only one of our students qualified for state, so that are, what I'm asking for at this point would just be for a one-night stay and $140. So again, if I had known beforehand, I would probably cover it to be honest with you at this school, but $140 is a lot different than almost $3,000.
What about for the coach or advisor that, will that person, will the student, is this for the student and the advisor?
That's what he brought to me, yes.
Okay.
How much was that?
$140. It's at the golf house. So it's where it is, and I think what we're going to do for the other kids, there's a general knowledge exam on that Monday, but it's just during the day. So I was going to have my other coach go up with him and compete in that, so that would just be transportation, not that you're on that, or that way they didn't kind of dissuade that we had such a good year.
Any other questions? So the motion would be for $140 instead of $28,000.
Would you entertain doing that for $175 in case, I mean, just to cover?
That saves.
Sounds low.
I know it sounds tough.
Two rooms. So could you do $175 just to cover that?
Pretty easy to keep calling up when you're sorry to $28.
This is not, I don't know how that works. Sorry.
I move that we approve the Campbell State Academic Team Competition Trip for the student who qualified for state in an allocation in the amount of $175 as requested.
Motion by the Seckel.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ritchie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Howard.
Thank you, guest, appreciate it.
All right, next up for two, Pay Applications, Mr. Stone.
First application for requested payment is for the ESCO side of the Campbell Construction Project. Summary is in your packet describing what work has been conducted over the past month. When you read that summary, you'll acknowledge, I'm sure, the progress that's been made has been quite impressive. We've moved pretty quickly with this project over the past month. I'm happy to talk about the progress. If you have any questions, but we're certainly on track for completion of that process, project in late May, early June.
Are these pictures of our project or someplace else?
That's ours.
Okay.
Pump Mile Jewels, and it's, yeah. I did that walkthrough today, in fact, and confirmed that that is the pictures of our building. Those are the pictures.
Any other questions, Mr. Stone? Not a motion is in order to consider approval of pay application number seven for the ESCO Energy Project for the Campbell Junior High School Construction Project, the amount of $141,599. Make that motion through. Motion by Mr. Paradon.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ritchie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries five to zero. And then a motion is in order to consider approval of Code Alpia estimate number 10 for the Campbell Junior High School Construction Project, the amount of $273,183.34. Make that motion through. Motion by Mr. Paradon.
Second.
Second by the Seckel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries five to zero. Next up, sign number 10, Consider Approval of Allocations Partners in Education for the Good Giving Challenge, the amount of $5,000. Mr. Yates? I'll call on you since you're here.
All right. Good evening. I have had two requests of you, but I'll talk about the money one first. I want to tell you a little bit of background. We had a very successful fundraising year in our past year during the 2015 Good Giving Challenge in Duke Park. A large part of that was for your allocation last year of $10,000. Our program is growing and evolving. In the last eight months, we have added five new partners to our program. Kentucky Bank, Emmanuel Episcopal Church, Manse Metals, Winchester Clark County Parks and Recreation, and my business, Major Dad Military Surplus. I told you wrong, Mr. Christie, I have 13 partners, but I have 14 partnerships, and that's how the program is evolving. Clark Regional Medical Center has been for a long time and still is a partner at Strode Station, but I went to Mississippi back in the spring or the fall and said, what do you think about partnering with the Human Health Services Program, that's ATC? And it seemed like a perfect fit. So we gained another partnership there, and that's part of how we've been stretching the growth and outreach of this program. A few more things to tell you about our impact on what we've done in the schools. In 2014 and 15, we had about 48 volunteers working with 190 students, and they put in about 1,350 hours. This year, we've got 60 volunteers working with about 230 students, and I project they will put over $1,700 in volunteering in our schools. Those same partners in 2014 and 15 donated $4,500 to our schools, not in time, money. This year, those same partners have already donated 2,800, and I project, in fact, Mr. Rose told me that he was in contact with his today, pretty soon, another 2,500 will be coming in from his partners. So we'll be at 5,300 coming into the schools this year. Like I said, we're requesting less than before. Our previous efforts having allowed us to increase our visibility in the community, we have increased our number of donors. Another thing that I've done, or not, the board and I have done, that we've not done before, is we now have corporate and civic sponsors. I've got Clark Regional Medical Center, Winchester Federal Bank, the Craft Nook, Rotary Club, Kiwanis Club, and the Central Kentucky Coon Hunt Association are all sponsors of our program during the Good Giving Challenge. And we always are looking for other funding opportunities. We got still reached last year, and I'm always on the lookout for other grant opportunities. Like I said, we're requesting $5,000 this year to be allocated during the FY7. Like I said, we're requesting $5,000 this year to be allocated during FY17. And I, if you do approve it, I would like for you during the Good Giving Challenge in the November, December timeframe, because obviously we get 100% match from the Clark County Community Foundation for the, for the money we raise up to $10,000. And lastly, I would like to tell you that our goal for 2000, or for FY17, are to obtain three more partners. And I plan on this summer, working with the principals more than I have in the past to try to get our program ramped up sooner. I would like to actually start getting tutors in the school, like maybe the first September if at all possible. And that concludes my portion on the, on that.
Questions, Mr. Gates? Any discussion?
I think PIES, but it's definitely grown over the past several years. I don't know if you guys are a logarithmic growth scale yet, but you're getting there. But I think it's been something that's been very positive for the schools and for members in the community, too. Speaking with people for PIE, I think the adults get a lot more out of this than the kids do, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Gates? If not a motion is in order to consider approval of allocation of partners in education for the Good Giving Challenge in amount of $5,000.
Make that motion.
Motion, Ms. Ritchie?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And Mr. Gates?
If I may, I have one more request. You may or may not know this, but since inception of this program, a member of your board has served on our board.
Right.
Dr. Beth Griffith was the most recent one, bear since I've had the job. And so I just wanted to at least put that formal request to the board that at some point in time, when you feel appropriate, we really would like to have that representative because it really helps for communication and collaboration. So I wanted to bring that up.
We'll be, we'll be discussing it. We want to wait and see. We didn't know who was going to be here until this morning, so.
Wanted everybody to have an opportunity.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be on next month's agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're volunteering you for that and for the committee.
Next is on number 11, set date to discuss calendar options for 2016, 2017 school year.
And Mr. Holland isn't here this evening, but we wanted to talk to you about how you all have talked about at various points, having some input on that, at least on the committee. Wanted to propose to you the possibility of the board coming up with possibly the three calendar options and letting know that you all have worked with or live with, and then those go back to the staff to choose. Some of the frustration from years past has been that we spent a couple months coming up with calendars, and teachers work hard to come up with two or three options, then when they come in, from your society gets changed, and then it's, there's frustrations on both parts. So I think in our conversations, what we would look at would be the possibilities of you coming up with three options to a calendar, and then put that at your desire, if you want to match the staff, the staff to choose from, so we're not having to go back and forth to behind meetings like we've had in years past on the calendar.
Right.
Now, this is coming up pretty quick because we got to, we got to worry about that 90 days prior to start of school for a lot of things we got to deal with.
Yes, this was, this was an issue last year. I think traditionally, the board was given three, the calendar committee that hashed out three potential calendars, the board met and effective one of the three. Last year, the board went off the grid and picked something that was not one of those three, and there was lots and lots of feedback about that. My comment after that meeting, my session with Mr. Christie was, can we have a board member on the calendar committee? And I still think that's the best solution to this because I think it's important that all stakeholders, that's teachers, that's certified staff, that's classified staff, that's board members, have a stake in that discussion and everybody come to some sort of agreement. And we, as board members, look at things differently because when I'm looking at a potential schedule, I want to make sure there's not any, sometimes if you can give me a schedule, there's some guaranteed low attendance days there, okay? There's a week where you've got a federal holiday at one place and something else over here, and you've only got, you're only in school two days that week, and the one at size of construction, number two, a lot of people are going to take off, and you're going to, you're going to, we have five days, we can write off five low attendance days for purposes of seat calculation. And, you know, I think if we, if we don't want to set yourself up and have a schedule that sets you up for low attendance days. So last year's meeting, you know, we were relying on some feedback from teachers and principals that said, listen, you know, the less interruptions and instructional time we have, the better our outcomes will be. And I guess looking at our map scores tonight, I don't know if not having a fall break had anything to do with that, but, you know, my scores are better on the interim, so. But that's something that, you know, I think needs to be discussed. I think we're all open to solutions or openness for discussion for board members, principals, cabinet, superintendent, anybody who wants to weigh in on this camp. Somebody say something, I know a thing or two's also there in the calendar.
I don't mind doing it your way. I've been on the other side, too. I've been on the calendar committee and worked on calendar committee for many days and come in and it, and nothing was accepted to go down. So I've been on both sides of it there, so I quit doing that. But, you know, I do think, you know, sometimes, you know, when you start getting down to which days here and there, but I think sometimes if we could just give a survey to teachers and sit down and really think about the question, what do you think we should start school? Do you think we should have a fall break? How many days do you think should be in fall break? Should we, how many days should we take off for Christmas, what do you think? Do you think we should have a PD before we start back second semester? And, you know, just asking some general questions. If we come up with a great group of questions, maybe with our principals and teachers alike, and technology can throw a survey or something together, at least give us some, if we decide to do the three proposals, I guess is what I'm saying. You know, I don't know, I don't know what our attendance looked like, you know, when we didn't have a fall break, and there was a lot of talk, when everybody else was taking places and going on fall break. You know, if you're on Facebook, you get to see everybody else's picture at the beach while you're here, and how much, you know, attendance that worked and attendance, I don't know. But, you know, I'm sure Mr. Holland could provide some of those things for us, but I just think if we, you know, get some, I don't think we're ever going to throw together a calendar where everybody's going to be happy about it, but, you know, we're going to have school regardless, but, you know, let's try to find the thing that maximizes learning and also maximizes the performance for the people that are working for us.
What do the principals say about that? Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
With the other group of questions, get to.
And just, you know, entertain questions from every level there that we came there.
Through the principals and the principals take it back.
And let, you know, Mr. Holland take a look at it, too, and say, you know, these were our highest attendance days, the lowest attendance days, kind of, I know, you know, if you do have a fall break, just like Dr. Kudick said, there's probably going to be a higher attendance the day before, day after. I mean, those are things that, I guess you could go in the workforce right there. I don't know what that tends in the workforce around the United States, a day after the Super Bowl. I understand it is pretty high mostly, so. We usually hope for a snow day here. Works sometimes, doesn't work sometimes.
I will, I'll work, Mr. Holland, and we'll start with the principals and put that, this is the question. Do you all want the, do you want to look at the questions? Do you want me to send?
I think board members need to put questions in as well. I mean, they can say, they can say, or even say, you know, this is important.
We should start to email me the questions. We'll put something together. What I'll do, I'll just call this, we'll send it back to you guys with your questions and questions that the cabinet administrators come up with, and we'll go from there.
So are we selecting the three calendars, or are we? I mean, I know we're doing the questions. DeGordy just volunteered to head that committee.
Well, what I'm saying is that I think, you know, you can put, you know, a lot of groups, I mean, you may have, you know, I don't know, just for numbers sake, you know, we've got, you know, 200 teachers that say, we don't need a fall break at all, okay? So try to get some kind of calendar, something like that. We've got another group that says, you know, we need two days for fall break, but I don't want to start until August the 20th or whatever. And just try to put people in those categories that you can. I know that's going to be a little bit hard to do, if you could throw together, you know, some things like that. Is it more important for you to start late, get out early? You know, what are, what are the things?
My questions will be fall break or not. You know, the number of days, if there are days.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last one.
Fall break or not, or do you agree as the number of days of fall break to be, if you did have it.
Why don't we do this, why don't you ask the principals first, or the people that you want to get their questions, and then you can email them to us, and then we can add to them from that point. Because, you know, it'd get kind of redundant.
I'll give out my email for all the complaints.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Send all complaints to you.
I need a little challenger now. I'm only a teacher compliance, I won't take any parent.
Oh, yes.
They can send that to the principals.
You got the principal, you got the principal coming in on the day after tomorrow, and there'll be a group already gathered.
They can share it with your site base as well. You got parents on your site base, they can share it with them, you know, play that, you know, for things and things. So then third, you get some parents.
So when is the drop down date for?
I'm going to start at school at 90 days back to, prior to the first day of school is the.
So you can start on this pretty quick.
Pretty quick, yeah.
Sunny go 50 passes.
Yeah, that's, that's opening the ballgame best as.
I don't think that would take, that probably wouldn't take a back from next year.
Because a lot of places have already set the calendars.
Right.
Yeah.
I have this done by the.
I have a question. Mr. Wilson might shed some light on this. I think Madison County, this is the new buzzword, did you watch these school closings for snow? NTI days, would there be any consideration in that survey or?
That's a question we could ask, yeah.
I mean, I, I was sharing.
They've been very successful for us.
Mr. Wilson, while I saw news stories the other day where a district reported having in something like 95% of the assignments they gave on the day that, I don't know if it regular day comes.
Montgomery had 98 last week.
I mean, that's, to me, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive, but I mean, you know, I think it's something to look at.
Mr. Wilson, but talk to some others about how they do that. I have a better understanding of how that, how that works now.
But now, don't we have to submit ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay, so what's, what's in place? What, when do we have to apply for that?
This time, I mean, in March.
Okay, so do we have something, so do we have something going on to request that? Who's working on that?
Yeah, what's involved in the application?
Holland is involved right now, putting the, you know, looking at the, the possibility and then get him tomorrow and see where we are.
You know, I, I just think.
Yeah, if we're doing that.
If this works well, how many days can you give them this?
Five.
Because I mean, you know, I, because I'm one of these people that likes to start late, I don't, you know, but people worry about how much is going to go into June or whatever else, but that, but that could give a great bearing on when you want to start school. I mean, potentially, you could start school a week later than what you normally have. You know, I.
The thing about what it's done for us, it gives us a chance to know, we're pretty sure we're going to know where graduation's going to be.
Right.
And that's a big event for a lot of people.
We normally, in the past, well, Mr. Holland does now, but in the past, you always waited till.
Yeah, we've had all the snow days and then some of the dates.
Always the day after the boys' state tournament. That was pretty much, you didn't have any snow day left, but you had some during that because you didn't have any after that. So, I mean, it just takes a long time for parents to prepare for things out there, but that's a good point.
Now, at Madison County, do your, do your staff members come in?
They have to be on call from nine to two in some form or some fashion, whether it's phone or whether it's like, we use, we use, it's not, it's like Blackboard if you use it in college, but it's something like that. We have an internet thing where they can, or we use Twitter, they can Twitter, and those things, or Snapchat and all that stuff. There's, the kids know how to get in touch with us. They can do that a whole lot better than I can.
We need to develop technology.
And what we do is we give them, after the next day that we have school, whatever that is, we give them seven days to turn in assignments. But the reason why that is, is because some kids do not have the internet at home or anything. We give them a packet, they do the packet and bring it back, and that counts as the NTI.
Now, at Montgomery County, they do their NTI days on days that staff can, they have their staff come in to be available on site for kids calling in or whatever.
And there's a lot of our staff that comes in, too, but we don't make it mandatory.
There's a lot of them that don't, that they haven't set up that they don't have to come in or be available. It just depends on how you write your proposal for it, and how county they pile it to do the first year.
Yes.
And we had some of the kids that did not have internet access, we had to have options other than being able to get in touch with the teachers.
And we had a little issue with that the first day we did it, being able to get in touch with a teacher, and we just kind of pressed the front end, you know, they need to be available. And it's gone well since then. I mean, you're going to have some glitches, and we got to work those out.
Yeah, that would be.
I think it's the intent of this group to pursue that.
Yes, pursue NTI. Big fan.
Make that happen for next year.
That would be, that would be very good.
All right. Okay, so we're going to pursue NTI for next year, and we are going to poll the audience and find out regarding key elements of calendar questions, once we get that data back, looking convened, and construct three calendar options, we'll submit those to the district that's involved, or maybe we'll.
It could be less than three options if the questions are.
Right. That's how they offer the poison.
And principals, we'll start the process by generating those questions Thursday at the principals' meeting. A board member can answer you on that, and we'll sort it out. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Does any board member wish to have any item for the consent agenda individually?
If not a motion is in order to approve, approve or acknowledge the following. On number 12, consider approval of ATC Auto Department Trip to Lincoln County Technology, March 18th, 2016, in Indianapolis and Vienna. Number 13 is consider approval of GRC Spring Baseball Tournament, March 28th through 31st in Emerson, Georgia. On number 14, approval of school fundraiser request. On number 15, acknowledge SBDM minutes. On number 16, approval of employee leaves of absence. On number 17, acknowledge Notice of Personnel Action Report. On number 18, acknowledge Monthly Energy Report. On number 19, acknowledge Cast Position Report. On number 20, acknowledge Clark County Clerk's Motive Equal Tax Report. On number 21, acknowledge Clark County Sheriff's Report. On number 22, acknowledge Monthly Financial Report. On number 23, acknowledge General Fund Budget Summary Report. Motion is in order to approve or acknowledge all of those items.
I move that we approve or acknowledge items 12 through 23 as itemized documentation.
Motion, Miss Hicks? Second by Mr. Parado. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Is in order to authorize payment of salaries that accounts payable. Motion, Mr. Parado?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ritchie. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Motion is in order to adjourn to closed session for proposed litigation for KRS 61.810, subsection 1, subsection E, discussion of proposed pending litigation on, against, or on behalf of the public agency.
Is it E or C?
I'm sorry, C.
C. Seconds.